So we will begin the Town of Dartmouth Planning Board meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Reminding everyone that this is being recorded. Like a roll call vote. And Margaret Sweet.
Yeah.
Kevin Estes.
Here.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Here.
Hilly Rosa.
Here.
And Kevin Melk here. So on to our first. Item of the evening, it is a public hearing. So we will need a motion in a second to recess the planning board's regular meeting and open the public hearing. Regarding application for special permit. Six ninety-six Dartmouth Street.
Motion made.
Second. Motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Hilly Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cyclepatis.
Yes.
Hilly Rosa.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Okay. The public here in regards, six ninety-six Dartmouth Street is called to order. And for the introduction, John Hanson, would you like to? Lead us in.
Good thing. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, John.
Hello there. Okay, so we have before you a special permit for the use. Which is a independent living facility for people fifty-five and over, as stated in. I have a shared six ninety-six Dartmouth Street located in a general business district. And. Do you want to have the applicant?
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Chair, John Markey Junior, here today with Christian Farland. And several people from Clermont Corporation and the Carney family to make the presentation. For this special permit and the related site plan review that Christian will certainly be able to answer more detailed technical questions for. If, just before I ask to receive the. Ability to show a short PowerPoint presentation, I just want to. Briefly introduce the fact that this is a special permit for an over fifty-five community that is located on Dartmouth Street and. You know, you work for twenty-five years as a lawyer in the community and you want opportunities where you can do something that is pleasant that's going to make the community better instead of fighting. With people, and this is one of those opportunities in my career. There's been a stated need by this board, by the select board and by the community more broadly for affordable housing and for over fifty-five housing. And so this is a chance to address that need. Second thing is that there's, you know. Being friendly with Maria at the Council on Aging and having her help the number of my clients. I'm pleased that this is a project that's going to tie in very well with the community. As the other project Amelia did, this is nearby to the Southworth Library and the Council on Aging. And I'm grateful that, and that this is going to be an opportunity to continue that practice and. Also for myself and for Christian and for the town, it's lucky that Clermont is willing to do this and interested in doing this. Since they already have a proven track record more broadly in the town, but specifically for this type of project within the last decade. So if I could have the ability to share screen, I'd just like to walk through some of the things.
Yes, please, Mike.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So this is going to be an over fifty-five independent living community at six ninety-six Dartmouth Street. Be talking both about the special permit standards and the site plan review. And as I mentioned, Clermont and the Carney family of the developers. You saw on the cover of the application that the board has seen that it is located on Dartmouth Street. And it is located on the water side of Dartmouth Street. Just to briefly basically show you the area, it is the area that is part parking lot and part green area presently. That is between the Dollar General store and the pickleball, new pickleball facility that has become popular in the community. And Christian Farland, when he does his presentation more completely on the project. Will have the entire area on Google Earth to answer any questions. But as I mentioned notably, obviously within a quarter mile, if you are heading towards New Bedford, towards the east. You would be seeing the Council on Aging facility. And if you headed about a quarter of a mile to the west towards Peyton Arum Village, you'd be at the Southworth Library. Both of which for over fifty-five community is healthy and, and, and an important component to their, their being integrated into the community. Secondly, now that I'm over fifty-five, pickleball is something I haven't yet tried, but I'm anxious to try and it's nice that that's nearby as well. So for the, for the. Planning board, some of you were on a planning board, I believe, when the, the ordinance was updated and this type of a use was promoted in this zoning district. I cite the appropriate district standards number here, but. One of the things that you had mentioned and that the town adopted was they wanted housing choices for Dartmouth senior citizens. This is something not unique necessarily to Dartmouth. I know that in a cushioned in Fairhaven. In Westport and all of the towns around here, they're trying to find affordable living for seniors who may want to. Give their house or sell their house to the next generation and live in a more, in a smaller and a simpler space. And this is going to give choice to people. Amelia is now. Basically full, and this is an opportunity to have additional spaces for people with similar needs for one bedroom and two bedroom units. A second standard within your ordinance is that the location be connected to community services and resources. And obviously, as I mentioned already, this is an ideal site for that. Third, that there be proximity to local businesses and. You've got a number of stores that are in the area along the Dartmouth Street corridor. That are in Dartmouth, you're close to the Peyton Arum community and you, you know, you have. Supermarkets, you have markets that are nearby. So. I think that's an ideal integration with Dartmouth local businesses. Because when you passed the, when the ordinance was passed, the town wanted to make sure that you were isolated. In a section of town where you wouldn't be using local businesses. As far as item number four, the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. You have proof of concept with Amelia, you have an area. Where you are not placing a large building in the middle of a bunch of small, single-family residences. You have a general business district, there are. People can get in and get out and use those businesses, but it is not something that is going to in any way. Adversely impact immediate neighbors. To our knowledge, the neighborhood is supportive of this concept. And they were supportive of the Amelia concept, which has been up and running for nearly, you know, for five or six years. Finally, one of the standards that. You had put into your ordinance was that the architecture be appropriate. And that there be sufficient parking and pedestrian access. And I think that as we walk through this and as Christian Farland walks you through the project in particular, you'll see that it meets all of those standards. Or reasonably asked for a waiver of some of the standards. Just to give you a flavor for what the building would look like. Pointing with the cursor, if you can see it, is the orange will be the building. There will be parking beneath the building and all of this green space around will be walking paths and benches and areas for people to sit in. So there'll be parking both in the lot here and parking beneath the building and Christian will go through the numbers on that. And what our historical experience has been at Amelia as to what's a reasonable number of parking spaces that are needed for this type of an over fifty-five community. There are some architectural renderings of this L-shaped building to give you a flavor for it, to confirm that it is the type of building that. Would meet the standards that you were looking for when you passed the ordinance. And the architectural renderings, I'll just walk through them quickly. There are a handful of them from different angles. As to what we anticipated to be with outdoor space to get lots of light and to give people a chance to get fresh air. Green areas that you'll see and. That is the basic architectural renderings to give you a sense of the scope of the building and the size of the building on the lot. One of the things that we did early on, just so that the board is aware, and I think the planning department is aware. The Carney and Clermont group have been looking at this project for more than a year. Late winter, early spring, we met with all of the department heads to go through any concerns they might have. One of the things we offered at that time was to do a traffic study. That was done and submitted in May. It was submitted to SERP head by the planning department. They provided comments. Those comments were responded to in October. Those reports have been filed with planning and. They basically determined there is no significant adverse impact. By putting an over fifty-five community in that area, given what the traffic patterns have been to date. One of the other issues that came up was the issue of sewer access and capacity. Early on, we were, it was indicated to us that the town may be concerned about. The capacity of adding eighty-nine units, even though they were relatively low flow over fifty-five communities or fifty-five units. So we reached out to the city of New Bedford and they said that if there is a need, they would be able to take. The flow from the eighty-nine proposed units. And that is something that because of the control that Clermont has regarding. Access ways to get tied into the New Bedford sewer is feasible for us to do. This is a letter that was updated most recently last week. So that it would identify the exact number of units, the appropriate CMR and the most current gallons per day. And the Bedford stands ready to do that. If it's necessary. Interestingly, and more recently, Christian Farland, as on behalf of the developers, had some conversations with DPI. And DPI has said that they may be willing to take the flow into the Dartmouth system. With a tie-in fee that would help Dartmouth do some of its engineering for a longer term vision as to how they were going to deal with. Sewer and wastewater treatment. We're open to that. We would prefer to work with the town of Dartmouth, but recognizing that that may not work. Because it was originally indicated to us that it would not work. We had the New Bedford backup. And I wanted to present that to you so that ultimately when you have a presentation. And hopefully a favorable vote at some point either tonight or at another meeting, that you would note that. We are approved for the project tying into Dartmouth, but if that does not prove feasible with the town. That we would have the option to use New Bedford as a backup, which as is set forth here, New Bedford clearly is willing to work with us on that. In addition to this, the traffic study and the waste and the wastewater, I wanted to note that. There's extensive work done by Farland Corporation on the stormwater and by the team at Clermont on the landscape design. And those detailed plans were submitted to planning into the town and we believe they've been looked upon favorably. Especially as the stormwater, it's a significant upgrade on this full parcel. Which really, you know, understandably, when it was laid out as an asphalt parking lot. A number of years ago, it did not have the current standards. If you go into the landscaping plan, Christian may get into more detail, but they've provided detail as to what the plantings will be and you can see. The significant green area around the proposed building. And some improved green area that is out near where the other retail spaces are off to the left. Of the building where the Dollar General is in the other open retail space. Ultimately, this is, you know, this is the basic site plan that is there. And given the ordinance that the town presented and the standards that they sought to meet. And the fact that this is a developer with an outstanding track record, both in the town over the past. Three decades, but more specifically on a virtually identical project within a quarter mile of this site within the last ten years. We're hoping that you would look favorably upon it. With that introduction, because Christian has a lot more technical expertise than me, I will opt out of being the. Person who's sharing the screen and, and turn things over to, to Christian. If that is acceptable to the board, I will be here to answer questions, though.
Thanks. Made my job a lot easier. He share my screen here. All right, can you guys all see that?
Yes.
All right, yeah, just for the record, Christian Fallon, Principal Engineer and President of Fallon Corp. here tonight representing. The applicant, which is seven oh four Dartmouth Street LLC. Also known as Clemo Co- Companies. We've been working on this project now for about a good five years or so, so it's a lot, lot in planning here. Project that worked together and. Expedited and submitted. Quickly in thirty days, we've been doing a lot of thinking about this. We went through. I don't know how many different versions and concept plans. So the plan that you guys have tonight and has been submitted definitely has a lot of. Lot of thoughts into it, not only from Fallon Corp., but. The developers who have been doing this a lot longer than I've been in business for. So there's definitely a lot of expertise in this project. We have a great design team from the architect, the landscape architect, traffic engineer, mechanical engineers. So there's a lot involved here. Just wanted to touch base a little bit on the existing conditions. Currently, they, we have a Dollar General on, on, onsite. And two vacant retail spaces. Which have been trying to been filled, filled for the past five years and unfortunately. With retail development right now, it's not a big need for it. So Clemont decided to, to. Add the apartment buildings to the, to the project, which as you know, is a big need in, in town. In doing so, we are going to be demoing the vacant building to the right. There is a common wall in between the, the two retail spaces. So it's about forty-seven hundred square feet. We're going to be demoing that, that section there. In regards to the curb cuts, you'll see on the proposed site plan. We are keeping the two existing curb cuts, which are, are in good locations for, for the development. We thought about, you know, relocating them, but with the traffic engineer on the team, he felt they, they are in the best location. For a safety standard. And I'm just going to pull up the. Site plan. So this is the color presentation plan. It's basically. Layout plan with some colors on it to help it, help you visualize it. Get a good understanding of the site. As I mentioned, the two curb cuts are going to remain as is. So as far as traffic circulation goes, cars will come in. From, most likely from Dartmouth Street. And this is a drive under garage, so just like Amelia, the garage is, is under the building. So cars will be driving under the building. Underneath the building, there's eighty parking spaces. They will. Go into the building and then there's an exit to the, to the east of the building, which is a ramp out only. So going into the building and out, out of the building is one-way traffic only. When they exit the building, they have the option of going, this was a new curb cut we put in here on Edgeroth Street. So cars could actually come out to Edgeroth Street. And exit west, which will bring them out to Dartmouth Street. Or they have the option to actually come, come through the site. And if they were heading to South Dartmouth, they would, they would exit on the south. Entrance, or if they were going north, they would enter on the north entrance. So the traffic flow is really great for the site. It's been a significant improvements to the overall. Existing parking lot. Which currently the existing parking lot has angled parking, one-way traffic through. So we, we changed, we changed the traffic pattern to be ninety degrees, which is more conventional. It allows two-way traffic on every aisle. We also. Plan on putting in all new. Islands in the, in the existing parking lot. All site lighting is getting all, all new poles and all new LED lights. And also the overall impervious area around that existing parking lot has been reduced. Quite a bit, so there's a lot more green space, especially along the northern abutting edge here between the bank site. And, and our, and our site. As you can see, as I mentioned, the reason. We had to demo that retail space was to. Improve the traffic flow, which is two-way traffic going in between the two, two uses. As John mentioned, the orange is, is the proposed building. This building is thirty-eight thousand square feet plus minus footprint. Contains fifty-six. One-bedroom. Units and thirty-three two-bedroom units, which is a total of eighty-nine units. We, we calculated the, the parking requirement to be two hundred eighteen spaces, which is two. Per unit for the residential use and forty for the retail space. All in all, for this site, we actually have two hundred sixteen parking spaces. So we're actually just too shy. Which is certainly more than what is needed for this use and specifically for being fifty-five and over. We actually feel we have certainly more than enough. Part of the site plan package actually included sixteen ghost parking spaces. Which are basically spaces that if. We felt there was a need for additional parking, we could, we could put them in. Which is basically on this green space here, on the south side of the, this main access drive. We could add spaces there if we needed to. However. With, with the experience from the developer with this fifty-five and over. And Amelia, which is just the abutting site, there's certainly more than, more than what's needed here. The building itself, just going to go through the utilities real quick. So as far as municipal water and sewer, we will be connected to Dartmouth Street. With the water will be coming right off Dartmouth Street. The sewer line itself will be tying into an existing manhole, which is in front of the Bayco site. Which is in Dartmouth Street, so we won't have to. Do any kind of trenching or, or cutting into the roadway, which is great. As John mentioned, he gave you a good history of where we've been with this site. So we basically have two options. With, with the number one option is hopefully we could tie into Dartmouth, which we'll be working with Tim Bobber and Paul Dua. But we, they feel that there is enough capacity. Especially with this site being a fifty-five and over. So basically the design flow for fifty-five and over. Is either one-ten per bedroom or one-fifty per unit. And the actual flow for this type of use is actually only about forty to fifty gallons per day. Which is almost like half of what the design flow is. So that being said, and then the former. Use of this corner facility here was a Papa Gino's, which had quite a bit of flow. So if you weigh in that, you know, the difference between the two, it's not really. A significant, you know, increase in flow. So that's why we're hoping we can just tie into Dartmouth. So the other significant improvements to the site is that I would say probably the biggest is going to be the stormwater improvements. Currently, the site right now, there is no treatment for stormwater. And there's also no infiltration on the entire site, which majority of the site. Is pretty much impervious pavement. So that's a lot of water that's running in, into the Dartmouth Street public infrastructure. With, with this development, we're meeting all the, all the town's requirements, new stormwater regs. Which is means we're basically recharging the roof, the rooftop. We're also recharging the new impervious pavement. And as far as the existing pavement go, we're actually adding this area in front, it's going to be. Bio retention. Area which will overflow during large events into. The town. Overall, the drainage has been reduced off-site runoff by fifty to seventy-five percent in some design points. So that has been a really significant improvement. In regards to the landscaping. Clemont Companies has hired Hawk Design, which is a registered landscape architect. And they have, we submitted that landscape plan. Which is certainly, goes above and beyond climates of the town. Think we have over thirty, thirty trees being planted and over three hundred shrubs throughout the entire site. So this is certainly going to be, beautify this area of Dartmouth Street quite a bit when this project is done. I know John did go over the renderings. Of, of the building, of what it would look like. We have the full set of residential plans too. I'll be glad to walk you through them if you want. But again, this is the same architect that designed Amelia. Everything's been working great there. There is certainly quite a bit of amenities too for the, for the residents. This beautiful courtyard we have here is basically a walk-in, a walk-in path. They could walk. During the day or night. And they have a courtyard area here, which will have fire pit, fire pit, benches, be able to sit down. And also connected to the south of the building, which is connecting to a community room, is another seating area. They can go outside and sit in the, in the back and eat with family. The building itself has full amenities, workout, workout gym, library. So it's a great place, great place to live. If you're fifty-five, get in your application now because I'm sure they'll be fully rented shortly. Again, a big, a big need for this type of use. Amelia, since they've, since they've, before they even opened. They've, they've had a waiting list over there. And I'm sure we'll see the same thing with this, with this project as well.
Okay, very good. It's. Is that the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to also say that we are going to be doing. A full new dumpster enclosures. They'll be fully enclosed with stockade fence around them as well. But yeah, and you know, the, the site plans have. All the other technical things you would see in regards to, you know, as far as erosion control and so forth.
And where will those dumpsters be? Under the building like in Amelia?
The dumpsters themselves will be. Internal and then the exterior dumpsters would be up in this corner here, which is located the new exit drive.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Being that this is a public hearing. I'd like to open the floor and Mike, if you could help me, we've got a large audience right now. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for this? Hey? I am not seeing any. Okay, anyone looking to speak against this? Any opposition? Okay. Being none, I will now open the floor to my board. Anyone from the board have any questions or concerns regarding this?
I'd like to ask a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Christian, on behalf of yourself and Farland and Clermont, I just want to say congratulations. It's a gorgeous rendition. And I think fulfilling a tremendous need in our town. I'm asking a question that I think will come up from a Butters and those across the street. What might one expect? From the lighting of this building as it's so much closer to Dartmouth Street compared to Amelia? What can the neighbors expect?
Sure. So as far as the, the lighting, the lighting goes. We are going to be putting in, right now, the site has older light poles. Which are, was certainly higher than what we're proposing. Which are was certainly higher than what we're proposing. And they're not cutoff lights, which means the light pretty much just goes out in open space everywhere. When new LED lights, the light fixtures themselves, they're called cutoff lights, they they shoot straight down. Therefore not to shine off onto the abutting, abutting site. The requirement. As as the lighting goes, is you can't have the light shine off off the site, so certainly that that won't be the case. As far as the building goes, you're gonna see the the west portion of the building. Which portion of that is a drive under, so you'll have, you have an exterior light there, but certainly that light wouldn't go beyond. The the drive aisle coming in into the site. So at the end of the day, all I think is gonna be a significant improvement to the to the Abutters.
Great, I'm I'm aware of the cutoff lighting, I just wanted to hear them, I wanted them to hear it from you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
The Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Uh, Christian, nice seeing you again, and I'll I'll echo what Nick said, I think this is, this is great. This whole development is a is a win for for Dartmouth, within the context of the. Public hearing, especially for the special permit, the parking distribution. If I look at your sheet three of ten. You you kind of beat me to it, because when I did my own calculations, I came up with the two spots being short. But the data that's being provided on sheet three, I don't think aligns with. Your presentation and certainly how I calculated it, I'm seeing a proposed seventy-nine. Number of spaces for the. Retail component. And which makes the residential provisions a lot less when you look at globally than the two hundred and sixteen. So the context of the discussion regarding a special permit becomes very different. When you're looking at two versus fifty, fifty plus. So I'm in alignment with. How you presented it, certainly how I calculated it, but from a formal presentation standpoint, probably need to.
Sure, I can, I can explain that. So the the town of Dartmouth has a requirement for retail, it has a minimum and a maximum. So I mean, I guess. The minimum is is forty, so if you if you use the forty, and then put the rest towards. The residential side, those are the numbers that I came that I came up with. So if you've got the eighty-nine units. Times two per unit, you need a hundred seventy-eight parking spaces. And then if you, the minimum for the retail was forty, so that's where I come up with the two eighteen.
Yeah, I I agree with the math, but what's on the document, what's on your sheet three?
Yeah.
Says that you're providing seventy-nine for the retail component versus what I think you're trying to say is you're gonna provide forty. Which is the minimum for the for the retail component with the balance being towards the residential. I think when you when you show in that context, which again is what you're presenting, the special permit ask is. Not as cumbersome, because you're asking for two, a relief of two versus a relief of fifty-four.
Yeah, I would stick with the relief of two in this case.
So I would just, I would just ask that you clean up the that zoning data chart so that it. Aligns with how we both are calculating it.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, no other comments, anything else is more site plan review related?
Margaret, Kevin?
Oh, I I I've been talking to. Connie's on and off, and I'm just, you know how I feel, I'm delighted to have apartments for over fifty-five, something that we need in this town. They do a good job, there's a few things that I guess we will need to be put on the plan. But I'm sure that Christian can do that, if you read through what's missing, so we would need to get those things in order. But they do a wonderful job, and I have been into the other one and. Perfect, it's perfect for people that go to Florida for three or four months. It's perfect for somebody who wants to stay in Dartmouth, and I'm all for this project.
Very good. Kevin? You good? Thank you, muted.
Yep, I have a question.
Yes.
I I agree with all the positive comments about this, this is exactly what we're looking for, and I applaud the efforts. I I just have a question, can you talk about the buffering between during construction and after construction? Between the parcel that 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 we're we're contemplating here and Sun and Sea Drive right behind it.
Well, I'm just gonna. Put up the site plan again. You're talking about the buffer to the east? Yes. So the buffer to the east. Will have, because of the topography out here. The drive, again, is it, it's a drive under, so when we're exiting here, there will be a drive up. On the right-hand side of that, just like Amelia, there will be a retaining wall. As we drive up and then eventually we'll be at grade when we get to the top of the ramp. Along this, along this property line here, there will be a new six-foot stockade fence. Along that entire property line, there will be a fence there, and there'll also be a fence going down. Towards Dartmouth Street at that same corner. I also think it's important to note that Connie's do own the abutting property as well. So during construction, we may need some more. Construction easement to get this retaining wall in, so we will, we will have a construction easement there. And during construction, there will be, along with the erosion control, there will be full construction fencing for safety. Nobody can wander off and into the construction site when when it's getting constructed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, so I I do have a question or two. One being, there seems to be an awful lot of parking spaces with no island break in between them. Am I just having a hard time counting the spots? It it feels like right where you're pointing that there should be a, an island with trees right in the center of those rows. Or is there a different plan with? Your plantains? Christian, you're muted.
Thank you. So currently, we're proposing sixteen parking spaces. This area, which we feel, we we actually increased the islands at the end. Landscape into them to beautify it, and we took away quite a bit of parking over here.
Okay, I I believe John is the code. Ten parking spots and then a break.
I believe so, Kevin.
If so, as well, just looking it up, sure Ross would know it off the top of his head, doesn't need to look it up.
Or Ross, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I was hoping with all the additional landscaping we did and the buffering we did, that this would be allowed. If not. We would, obviously, every island we put in will be losing two parking spaces. Which we still feel we we certainly have enough parking, but just keep that in mind.
I I know personally with your, with your. Your ability to show as additional parking if necessary, I personally would rather see. Those trees added to break up the blacktop, the heat from the blacktop and. Then you have the ability to add them later. But that, you know, that's a board, it's either, you know, you'll have to ask for that to be a waiver. Or you add that in and we give you a waiver for parking, so it really depends on which way the board. Prefers the lean. The other question. That i- is there any way, you know, especially in North Dartmouth, we fight to be able to connect plazas. Without people having to go out onto the main road, currently this plaza is connected to the Bay Coast slash Pickleball Plaza. That's eliminated now, is there any way to? Why shorten that amount of grass and trees on Dartmouth Street? To the right of your entrance and allow for the two-way traffic. So that somebody going from Dollar General could go right over to. Pickleball Bay Coast Bank without exiting, going on Dartmouth Street. You also eliminated it from Webster Bank, but I feel that's less of a, of a concern.
Yeah, the reason why we we had to eliminate that is because of the the topography with the with the garage driving under. It would make it difficult for.
Oh, you have to start your ramp. Oh, okay, I understand that then. Okay, that that's that's understandable. Okay. So I think we're at the end of the questions at this time.
Mister Chair, I just had a few questions, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, go right ahead, John.
Nice to see you, Christian.
You too, welcome back.
Thank you, one was on the level of service, if that was included, if that was calculated at all for the traffic study for any adjacent intersections.
Yeah, I believe, John, there was no change in the level of service, we can certainly verify that, though, with the traffic engineer.
Okay, and then, second, I know we've talked a bit about the parking and the. Two less parking spaces than what's required, and I know Ross had identified that in his report. About special permit being needed, I just wanna confirm, has that been applied for or not?
John? Did you submit the, for the parking?
I'm, I, I did not know, and I apologize if it was not, if there was a special piece of paper that needed to be filed for a waiver on that. I thought that was the condition that the board could vote on the special permit, and I apologize if. If the application needs to be supplemented with that, I will, but we knew as we were preparing to present today that we would be asking for a reduction in parking. As part of the special permit process.
And my third question would be, Christian, if you could just. Talk about the access on the north side of the existing building, the commercial building there. It doesn't look like that's wide enough for two-way traffic, is there gonna be any sort of restriction? Or vehicles coming out of this proposed development, making a left and. Conflicting with any vehicles utilizing that access?
So the drive going, exiting the site is one-way traffic going out. And it's it's eighteen feet wide, which means the requirement of the fire department.
Right, I I mean, the the accessway on the north side of the existing building, it looks like there's room for cars to. Get from the front of the building to the back of the building on the north side of that.
On, you're talking about the retail space here?
Exactly.
Yeah, we haven't changed any of this layout over here, this is the exact footprint. What we have done is provided more of an access drive getting back there for loading and unloading. And then now they will have this exit drive, so ideally, there's really, I don't know if anybody will even be using this north. Coming around the building anymore, I think most of the traffic flow, especially a larger. Tractor trailers doing unloading, you have a Dollar General, will will use the the new exit drive.
Okay, this might be helpful, Boardman, when I consider requiring some sort of signage there, so we don't have conflicting. Opposing traffic, one going, that would be east and one going west, but that's pretty minor. And then my last question would be with the ghost spaces, I assume that if we're ever in a position that those would be needed, you would be coming back. For the design, is that correct?
Yeah, they are shown on the layout plan, so it may, maybe the board can put some verbiage in the, if they decide to approve it. In the conditions that if if there's ever a need for parking, that these spaces could be certainly used.
Yeah, I saw that on the plan, I was just curious how they would be separated, would you have an island between, it'd be curb stops? Just curious how that would function?
Basically, we would basically break the the curb. Pretty much right where this island is, across from the island, and come straight down. There were sixteen parking spaces there, so it does, it did align with this other island here, and it gets built right into here. So there would be green space in between the two parking spaces.
Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you.
So at this time. We can vote. To close the public hearing, I don't see any reason, John, any reason to keep the public hearing open?
No, I think that on the special permit piece, as we just talked about, I think, other than the parking issue, I think we've met all the standards. But some of the thoughtful comments you've made might relate to site plan review, which I assume will be dealing with next, so I think. I feel very comfortable, if you, if the board feels comfortable moving forward with this special permit.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, Mister Chairman, I'm not sure if you were directing that question to me or to. The other John who just chimed in, but the board should just, for the record. Make some findings here, as was mentioned in the staff report that Ross prepared, which included some of my comments. Some of these are subjective standards, but certainly. Number four and six, I believe. It would be appropriate if you just stated for the record that the design of the building would be appropriate and consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, which I think. You could certainly do by stating that it's consistent with the nearby building, which we've talked about numerous times this evening. And then the last one about the project demonstrating a positive impact on the local business. The board should just state that it would bring residents to the area, thus increasing the customer base for the businesses.
Okay, so you heard the recommendations.
Mister Chair?
One?
Yes. One follow-up, if I could?
Yes.
Regarding item four and consistent with the nearby buildings, what what are the materials on the exterior of the building?
If you give me a second here, I can pull up the architectures.
Christian, I can answer the question if need be.
Sure, if you wanna go, I'll 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 pull it up as we get in there.
Hi, this is Ned Carney from the Claremont Companies, today the building is designed with a mix of hardy board and vinyl siding.
I think that's good, that that answered the question, Christian, thank you. Okay, so I will need a motion, please consider John Hanson's recommendations and a second to. Make note of those, we will close out the public hearing and then move on to site plan review.
Kevin, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this special permit as proposed by Claremont. With the recommendations by our interim planning director to include continuity in the exterior of the building. With the building most close to this site, and to propose all that was said about services and tenancy. And promoting what we're doing in South Dartmouth, especially for our fifty-five-plus community.
Motion made by Nick Cyclopedus, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Helio Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cyclopedus?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good, now we will need a motion to. Close the public hearing and resume our regular meeting.
Motion made.
Motion made by Nick Cyclopedus, second by uh Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Nick Cyclopedus?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good, on to uh administrative items. Site plan review for six ninety-six Dartmouth Street. Think we've already um touched base on the majority of it. Um, Christian, do you feel that uh? You can make the necessary changes and we should just continue this to our next. Meeting?
Mister Chair, I think Christian Farley got disconnected. I don't see him on the list anymore.
Okay. We'll give him a minute to uh come back in. Uh, in meantime, uh, did any board member have any questions or any further input? Into site plan review, um. I know my concern was no more than ten spaces without. Trees. We can. That's only my opinion, so I'd like to know, y'all, if you agree or not.
Mister Chair. Well, I will have some questions, um, but to your to your point on the parking. I think the site would benefit from adding the islands. And increasing the number of. Future potential spaces from two to to seven. Um, reduce the amount of impervious materials on site. The islands, I think, are are a value add to the site. If we're if we're going to have a difference of two to begin with, I think the two to seven. In my mind is negligible, considering what we would gain by adding the um, the islands. My opinion.
I just have one question, um, which which is just. Food for thought, that vacant building, right now, the retail has uh. Proposed, I think it's uh required a seventy-nine maximum, and we're gonna use forty. It, I I'm a little. I I wonder what kind of business would go in there. That's it, could because. If we needed the seventy-nine for the retail. That's my only concern. And it hasn't been vacant a very long time.
It has been, but maybe now with um. You know. With additional. Residents in the area. It would be a great place for somebody to.
Oh, I agree.
Any type of business that would support, you know, people that are aging in place. Um, whether it's. A little restaurant, a diner, or. Beauty shop.
I'd like to make a comment about about this subject that um. I'd like to give Mister Carney and company a little bit of leeway here as it relates to what we're describing. Discussing, su- suggesting. There's a profound discontinuity at this moment on this site between what's going up. And what's remaining. And reading between the lines and uh being in business, there are reasons perhaps why things may not happen at the same time. If there's a goal, which is none of our business at this po- at this point in time, but if there's a goal. Where such discontinuity is changed. And there's another structure. Uh, more aligned with what's there in another project in the future. It could change our entire discussion about two islands. And or seventy-nine parking spots, and growing up in the restaurant business, I'm gonna tell you. That a hundred and seventy to two hundred and fifty residents over fifty-five on site are not enough to support a restaurant, so. Please don't go open a restaurant tomorrow because there's a building being built there. I'm just hopeful that the discontinuity may change for the better down the road. Um, with Mister Carney and company, that's all. And and for that reason, I'm willing to be. A little bit more lenient than perhaps what we're discussing over two islands and a couple of apartments.
Oh, I absolutely agree. I'm just wondering, you know, and I know that they will probably. Um, because of who they are, they'll be considerate of that vacant building, okay? So I agree with you, Nick, I'm not overly concerned, I just want to mention it.
And the it what really hinges here is is the ghost spots.
Right.
You know, having that. We have the spots. I do not want to see more blacktop than it's necessary.
Right.
So, if there's a problem, uh, um, Christian, I see that you're back. Um, is it possible to? Pencil in the ghost. Spots.
Yeah.
On your final draft, just.
Yeah, I can hear, um. Let me see the site plans again.
I see it on L one point one, but it would be good to have it on the site plan as well.
Yep. All right, here we go. So there's sixteen.
Ghost, so you have them there, great.
Okay.
So there would be, I mean, if we did put these in, there would be still green space in between the two parking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's asking for you to put them in at this point, um. General consensus is we'd like to see the trees in the center going across those aisles. Um. To break up the parking lot to uh give some canopy for for keeping. Warming down, um. But that would, that's great.
Thanks.
Okay, um, Helio, you had questions for?
I do, I do, thank you, Mister Chair, um. So a few, a few questions I I wrote down that I'll I'll rattle off here. Um, the issue of a fire lane, um, does the architect of record have um? A determination whether by building code requirements, is there a fire lane needed?
Um. We know that the the file. The fire trucks could could come in and turn around. Almost anywhere on site with these new traffic aisles. So if we. If there was a fire. This access aisle here, you could access. Um, majority of the building. Then the other side of the building um could be accessed through the abutting property. Um, on the on the south side. Which pretty much covers the entire, the entire building. Um. And we know from last. Project we did with Amelia. This. Is quite a bit of improvement um for fire access than than that project had. Um, so we we feel we we do meet all the requirements. Um, unfortunately, the architect couldn't be here tonight. Otherwise, he would have been. But it, but. As you know, Helio, this de- needs. To go through building department and. And certainly that that would would be addressed at that point.
Well, so the reason I ask, um. With an architect of record on a project like this, uh, I'm not sure what the construction type is on on the building itself. There's gonna be area limitations, height limitations. Um, sprinkler requirements, and I know, um, if certain criterias aren't met. You might need a fire lane. So that you can build the building to this. Um, area and to the height required, so I I think. We don't have jurisdiction over whether it's required, but if one does end up being required by building code, it would certainly alter. The site plan itself. I would recommend the architect of record make. Um, a formal determination whether. As the architect of record, a fire lane is or is not required.
Okay.
Uh. We talked, touched base on the dumpsters. You showed the two dumpsters off on the left side. Those two dumpsters are gonna serve both the retail and residential.
Um, I believe. Dollar General currently has their own dumpster location right now, so this would just be for the residential.
Okay, even better. Uh, regarding some of the the connections, there is what appears to be a stairwell on the north. Sorry, southeastern side that uh discharges from the parking. Is that correct? Right next to where the? The the. The ramp is coming out on the east side?
Yeah, I see one screen again, too.
Yeah, right on that corner. Is there a connection? Is that egress? Normally, when you have a means of egress scenario, you need to have a connection to. A public right-of-way. Is that going to be required? And again, from the standpoint, would it alter this plan?
So I think what we would end up having here is um a gate. Um, to the abutting property. And in case of an emergency to get to get out, which. Has access to the right-of-way. Um, almost like a meeting location. In case of a fire.
Okay, then in in that scenario, again, I would get the architect of record to make a determination of whether that's required. Cause I don't recall if you can discharge onto. Somebody else's property. So. Just. Follow through on that.
Yeah, Chris- Christian, can I make a clarification on that comment? This is Ned Carney again, if that's okay? Uh, that's not a stairwell, the two egresses, there's one, um. I guess on the west side, uh, which exits the egresses into the courtyard in the in the middle of the L, and the. Second one is closer to Dartmouth Street on the left side of the building or the north side of the building that flows right out into the parking lot. That back corner is not a stairwell.
Um, A one oh one shows a door. Discharging from the corner of the parking. To the exterior up a set of stairs that goes somewhere.
Is it the garage, Christian?
Yes, garage. This is the garage coming up from the garage. So I'm wondering if we. Maybe have that. Change that door location. We can look at, we either way, we can look at it.
There's something to consider, uh, again, I did. Site plan.
Yeah, we can have the wall maybe continue. To the end of the stairway, that way you're exiting up the ramp. So, yeah, I appreciate it. We'll we'll definitely have the architect look at that.
Um, again, going down my list here, there is a obviously a connection to where the old Papagena was into the Bay Coast. You're showing that area as green space now, as you described in the in the public hearing, you have grading issues to contend with. What's happening on the other side of the property line? Once that that. Connection is gone. We see what's happening on this side of the property line. What consideration is being done on the? Bay coast side?
Christian John's presentation had a rendering of that side of the building.
Yeah, I'm pointing it up. So basically, this would just be a, you know, the traffic flow would would circulate right around the the Bay Coast site. Um. This would just get removed over here. So it would be, it would be just rounded.
Okay, so you're gonna round that so that somebody can't. Coming alongside Bay Coast can't take a right and go into. A burn.
Yep.
I'm confused, I'm confused with that. Could you explain that to me, please? Cause that you just confused me. What are you gonna do?
So the way this property is now, Margaret, is the, there's a connection.
Uh-huh.
Uh, with a with a Papagena.
Right.
Um, so with the Papaginos, it made it made sense, um. But. With the new project, where the the driveway is going under, coming from point, so the grades. Won't be enough to come back up and meet meet rates here. Um, so we're just getting rid of this. Connection between the two properties. Um, so anybody going to Bay Coast. They go through the drive-through, they just loop back around and like.
Okay.
Exit back out, which is pretty much what most of them do anyway. Um.
So what are you gonna put there, Christian?
It's a result of green space.
It'll be all green space, okay.
Correct.
If I could add that Pat County from Clermont, there'll also be a fence. On that whole um boundary, so it'll be impossible for a vehicle to try to enter. To the site, there'll be a six-foot fence plus land, plus heavy landscaping.
And my last comment is, um, are there gonna be? Any plantings along the south side? Again, separating the the long facade of the building and, I guess, the Bay Coast side. Of the uh adjacent property.
What the landscape plan? So this is the landscape plan now. So on the south side, there's a quite a bit of a slope here, and the grades change quite a bit. And then you go down from roughly seventy-eight at the bottom of the slope. Um, up to eighty-four to our site. So where we have it, uh. Seating area here, this is quite. Been landscaped around this. To create a buffer. And then, as Mister County just said, we're putting up a six-foot stockade fence. And the rest of it's just gonna be lumen seed. Along the back, back of the building. Um. So elevation-wise, it's really. Mostly thing you're gonna see from down down gradient is the is the six-foot stockade fence.
Okay. All right, thank you, Christian, thank you, um, again, great project. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Anyone else from the board? Okay, so, um. I believe we will need to continue this to our next meeting. Uh. We very rarely get a project this size, uh. Off the ground in one meeting. Christian, do you think two weeks is enough time for you, or do you need to um go further? Out?
No, two weeks is, I think, definitely um enough time. Did we decide on whether the board wanted the additional islands?
We did, yes, uh, it was the consensus that we would rather give you. A larger waiver. On parking spots. And have the more, have more trees.
Uh, Kevin, I could work with Ross and John.
Yes.
Uh, if I may, um, depending on. If a special permit is gonna be required for parking, that would need to be advertised. Uh, which requires about a three-week buffer because it can't be the week. Right before. So, uh, if there's gonna be a special permit for parking required. Um, which it's sounding sounding like it is, then this probably wouldn't be able to be on the for the next meeting because there would need to be a special permit. Applied for, and then it would need to be legally advertised.
So. If we tell them now. Just develop. Seven of those ghost sites. They wouldn't need to apply for a special permit for that.
I would probably defer to John on that one, if possible.
John, you're in.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if they're gonna meet the standards, then no special permit is needed. It's just a question of whether or not you want him to. It seems like he would already meet. The standards for the special permit. So if you don't want him to create them. Then just have him apply for the special permit.
Uh, I guess at that point, I'll I'll put that up to the applicants, you know, um. I I don't know. I don't know how they feel, I mean, personally, I'm thinking just develop the spots and be done with it, no more paperwork, no more. You know, advertising, but um. Seems like a shame, but if that is procedure.
Mister Chair, uh, Mister Chair, if I may, um, it's very counterintuitive, though, to how we feel as a board, uh, uh, about. Uh, such surfaces and what we're suggesting here tonight. Um, and just being transparent, we all know the site very, very well. Have you ever seen the retail space anywhere near capacity? I I I don't want to ask them to do something that quite frankly is adverse.
I just don't want to delay them any further. I want to give them the option, that that's all.
But we're giving them the option, we're giving them the option. Suggestive of the fact that we're on board with the special permit that they're about to apply for, correct? Or at least I am.
I would agree, yes, but there would be further delay, that's all. Time is money. So, Christian, um. Your thoughts are? Your thoughts are, you know, I guess. We don't have to answer today. Um we could continue to uh. You know, no, and actually, we've been asked to continue with no definite date in mind. And you can discuss it with your clients, how you wanna move forward.
Speaking of.
Yes.
Speaking of Clamont, uh Pat County again, I prefer to have the ghost parking not built to have more green space. I drive by, I live on Rockland Street, so I drive by this location.
Very good.
Times a day, and I've never seen more than a dozen cars at Dollar General, so. I I I hate to build parking that's not needed, so I'd. I'd rather do whatever we gotta do to not build the ghost parking now.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
Having heard that, I think we would continue with not for two weeks, but for four weeks, I'll give Christian time to update the plan. And us time to have that special permit application for the end of this week.
Excellent. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Carney.
That December sixteenth for the next hearing?
Correct.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to continue to a future meeting.
Second. We have a motion to continue to a future meeting uh by Helio Rosa, second by Nick Cyclopatis, all in favor, Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
That's December sixteenth.
We we've been asked not to specify an exact date because of something, if you do it on December sixteenth. If you say December sixteen. And something happens that they can't do it for December sixteen. Then we have to continue it again.
Okay, so just continue it. Okay, yes, that's fine.
Yes, uh Kevin Estes.
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. Very good. We will hopefully see you on the sixteenth and uh wrap this up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, very good. Um. Onto number two, site plan review for sixty eight Old Fall River Road. Again, John, why don't you walk us into it and then hand it off to the applicants?
Okay, just bring that one up here. It's been a while with the sixty eight uh Old Fall River Road. Apologize for not remembering right off the top of my head here where we are. Let's see.
John, if you want, I can give the intro.
Sure, yep, I just I just found it, but go ahead.
Okay. Um so just a reminder, this is a site plan review application for a proposed twenty two thousand one hundred and thirty one square foot building. For a business headquarters for First Citizens Federal Credit Union. Um is located at sixty eight Old Fall River Road. Uh there is currently a two family dwelling there and the land was used as farmland previously. Uh it is in the limited industrial zoning district. It is not in any overlay districts. Um the last time this was continued to supply time for the DPW to complete the review, they have now done so without any further comments. Um we have had a couple of questions about abutters. Uh from from abutters with concerns and questions. Um that I will allow the engineer to expand upon once they're done presenting, but uh I believe they're here now, so if they wanna start.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh Sam Imeli with JC Engineering. Um if I may, go ahead and share my screen for our discussion.
Yes, please.
All right, can everybody see the uh layout plan here?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so um yeah, as Ross mentioned, um last time we were in front of you back in September. It was recommended we continue to get some feedback from the DPW. Um. We've since received comments from the DPW. We've worked through revising the plan and um. The DPW has stated that we've met their comments and they have no further comments at this point. Um just to summarize, um there were really no major layout changes from the plan you previously saw. We added some additional parking spaces up towards the front of the lot and also added a bike rack as well. Um so most of those changes were addressing um. Plan notes, details, and the stormwater report. Um. But yeah, with um with no really major changes, I'm, you know, happy to answer any questions that the board may have or concerns.
Okay, very good. Anyone on the board, any questions?
I have a question, Mister Chair, and um. For forgive me, Sam, for being quite vague. But an abutter. Um was concerned about their well. And perhaps. What's happening on this property? And as vague as my question is. Is there any risk to the abutter's well and or what is the buffer between this project and the abutter's well?
Um so we have shown here hundred foot radiuses around the um. Abutting wells here that are within the vicinity of the property here. And we're maintaining, you know, one hundred feet outside of that with, you know, what's required, which is the stormwater basin. Um and the septic system. Um aside from that, the only thing in those buffer zones are is gonna be a walking trail. Um. But that would really be the only thing within that hundred foot buffer zone.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Following on that note, Mister Chairman, I have a question. Um what 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 will you do with any snow? Where are you gonna? Put the snow uh if we have storms again, where would you put all the snow that you plow off the wall?
Sure, yeah, so um on the plan, you know, we had. Created this label here for the disposal area um for snow um down back in this parking facility here. But all along the edge of this driveway as well is gonna be keep cloud burn, so that can easily be pushed to the side. Off of um this drive aisle, but we did sort of designate a an open space here for um for snow back in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Question for me, Mister Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Helio.
So taking into account the abutters concern and, you know, extra runoff from snow and accumulation of snow, um. Can we protect the well area um? The one well where the driveway comes through to minimize the amount of snow dumping in that area?
Um is there a way we can eliminate that, you're saying, asking?
Not, I don't know how to eliminate it, but you know, is there a way to put signage up to, you know, not not create, you know. It's all berms of snow or anything, just where it may increase the amount of runoff within that radius around that well.
Um yeah, there's there's certainly ways to do that with signage could be one, um you know, with. With designing the drainage and everything, we had to account for what's what's being run off to that property there. And um you know, we're we're capturing kind of anything coming in from the north within, you know, it's gonna be stopped at our roadway and then and. Work its way into the catch basin and then to our infiltration basin. So we have greatly reduced the runoff and shown that in our stormwater report. That's that's directed towards that property.
Okay.
If I may, Mister Rosa, where which well are you talking about? Cause I wanna be cognizant of, we wanna be good neighbors, so I wanna be cognizant of. Where we need to be thoughtful about that.
I'm looking at the the. I wanna um look at the radius where the entry drive intersects.
Yep.
Okay, so Sam, help me on the map. Where are we looking? Can you point to roughly?
So I had believed you were talking about this property down here. Here's the well and here's that radius. We also have a well right here, which is actually on our property. I'm gonna be maintaining that for irrigation, so that's the buffer to our our own well on the property.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Mm hmm.
The the first well that you pointed to, Sam, was the one that there was concerns about.
Right, this one down here.
Correct, correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one more question, Mister Chair, if possible.
Yes, please.
Are there any existing? And or were there up until now, perhaps? And again, this is um from a resident. Um and I could not answer the question, so here I am. Were there and or are there any disruption to existing or historic septic systems? That are um. On and or close to your property or the abutter.
Um no, so we um you know, we gained historic approval to um to demo the structures there. There was it was a residential structure that was previously on this property there. They had a septic system. Probably right in this area here, which was gonna be abandoned um and filled in um. But um. New septic's gonna be out and or behind the building there, so far away from any wells. Um. But yeah, does that.
There. Thank you. A re- a resident also was concerned about that. Thank you.
Oh, mm hmm.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Kevin, can I can I chime in really quick?
Yes, Ross, please.
Thank you. Um Friday afternoon, after your packets had gone out, another resident came into the planning office and was inquiring whether or not. Um the engineer wouldn't mind just explaining um essentially. That their land to the east of this site would be clear from any extreme runoff or drainage. Um they had voiced concerns regarding that. Um as well as any potential uh people treading off the walking trail um into the into their property. I just wanted to voice that on their behalf.
Thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
Okay, uh is that it, Ross?
Yes, that we covered the well question, uh the runoff question. Oh, additionally, one more. To the west, the thirty wide foot easement, uh are you guys using that at all with this project? Someone was, uh a butter was concerned that they had not been um asked about the use of that easement.
Um no, we don't, we don't anticipate using that, um keeping all site work within within the boundaries of this property.
Wonderful. That was it. Thank you so much.
Mm hmm.
Okay, very good. Um. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Like to make a motion, Mister Chair.
Go right ahead.
That we support this project as proposed.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Nick Cyclopatis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone.
Mm hmm, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, good luck.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Site plan review, four eighty one Fons Corner Road, number three.
I'm happy to do the intro again.
Okay, very good.
Um so this site plan review application is for a proposed sixty four unit multifamily residential building. Located at four eighty one Fons Corner Road. There are one hundred and twenty eight parking spaces required as each unit requires two. There are indeed one hundred and twenty eight parking spaces being proposed. Um, let's see. At this time, I'd I'd spoken with the engineers who I hope are present uh that both the planning and DPW comments haven't been. Met at this time, um but they would, they wanted an opportunity to present and kind of bring the project forward and open it up for discussion, so. Um now would be that time.
Okay, very good. Um. Who's here for the project?
That would be me. My name is Joseph Sander with Allen and Major Associates. Here on behalf of my client, Pascoment Land Company, for the site plan review for the forty one Fons Corner Road.
Very good.
With. With your permission, Mister Chairman, I'd like to share my screen.
Yes, please.
So the proposed project, oh sorry, is can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the proposed project is a, as Mister Cuddy stated, a sixty four unit. Three-story residential building. My client has previously gone through the ZBA for a. Use variance in order to allow the residential. Because the site is currently located in the Office Industrial and Limited Industrial Zoning District. The project will consist of uh stormwater mitigation, subsurface utilities. The project will connect to the sewer system. Or sewer network that is coming off of Ventura Drive that my client has previously applied and been approved for. Regarding the medical building on the north side of the access drive, which is currently under construction at this time. The water will come off of the existing line within the access driveway. The stormwater for the site. My client is taking a multi-phase approach to the development regarding the. Medical building on the north side as well as the proposed residential on the south side during the site plan review. Process for the medical building on the northern side of the access drive. The stormwater basin located on the bottom right was permitted and approved. As well as a preliminary. Approval for the stormwater underground chambers. To account for this residential project, so with the design of this portion of the project. The building footprint actually cut into the approved basin, which took away some storage volume. The underground chambers are the exact same as proposed with the original. Application. The only difference is that the layout of the chambers is slightly different. It went from a standard rectangle square shape to now this jagged. Due to the modification of the building and in order to meet the required setbacks. Because of the basin on the right, losing storage volume due to the design of the site. The existing basin that is located on the left is proposed to be expanded in order to make up for that lost volume. As Mister Cuddy said, the site, the project needs to have two parking spaces for each unit. Per the use variance by the ZBA. We currently do have a hundred and twenty eight spaces. It's a mix between standard spaces, compact spaces, angled spaces, and then of course ADA spaces. The project is. We are requesting to uh some variances, I apologize, some waivers for the project. The first would be for the parking facility setback requirement relative to the property line, the street line. And in addition, uh second waiver would be requested for the requirement of ten percent of the landscaped. Of the parking facility to be landscaped through a meeting that. The my myself, my supervisor, the client had with Mister Paul Duarte and Mark Garrett with Conservation. Uh Mister Duarte expressed that vehicle circulation through the parking facility. Was something that was important, so originally in this top left corner. There was a turnaround area which allowed for. More green space within the parking facility, but because of the request for the vehicle circulation to get this. Uh drive aisle connected to the the one to the south. It eliminated some of that area to be landscaped, which brought us underneath that ten percent requirement, which is the reason we're requesting that waiver. So that's the extent of the project. And I would like to open it up to the public and to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Okay, anyone from the board?
Joe, may I, Mister Chair, can I ask Joe a question?
Please.
Uh good evening. You you did a lot of um net loss computing, uh. That loss and and gain computing early on. Can you just summarize what what the result is of that for us, maybe that didn't follow? And also for those who are watching.
Sure, are you're speaking specifically in terms of stormwater?
More, yes, I mean, just can you generalize? More, yes, I mean, just can you generalize the net result? I think it'll be uh easier for most of us to compute. Than the technical description, which was well presented, but. I was paying attention and I don't have a calculation um in my, on my mind. Can you just give us a net result?
Sure, so through the original design process for the medical building on the northern side. The uh precondition rate of runoff was analyzed and with the. Modification to the southern portion, the one that is being presented right now. The exist, the basin on the right lost approximately uh. And I apologize, I don't have this number off the top of my head, I'm going off of recollection, but I believe it's around uh fifteen thousand cubic feet of. Storage, which will be added to the existing basin on the left. So uh a net of, a net even.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up to Nick?
Yes, please do.
So in the interest of calculations, um, the ten percent um requirement for landscape within the parking facility. You were at requirement. What was the percentage, what, what is the percentage you're at now? What, what did we lose?
So the, previously, we were just above the ten percent. Uh, I believe it was ten, ten and a half percent, give or take, and with losing that. Faci- uh, those landscape areas due to the vehicle circulation, we're at about seven percent right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, anyone else? So I know I, I don't know if you were listening in, but it's the same question as the last one. You seem to have about sixteen parking spots. Um, running with no islands separating them.
Yes, so while listening to the other uh presentation, I was reminded of that. And the, the reason for that previously before the vehicle circulation comment from Mr. Duarte was incorporated into the design. We had landscaped islands to break up that parking facility, but because of the use variance requirement of two spaces per unit. We had to hold steady at the hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces, and in order to make that work with the constraints of the site. The access drive, the basins on either side, and of course the abutters to the south. There was no opportunity to, to gain those spaces back as well as keep those landscaped islands. So it was kind of a trade-off between vehicle circulation versus the landscaped a- areas within the parking facility.
Um, you ha- you are showing a width of uh twenty. A depth of twenty and a width of ten for each of those parking spots.
Correct.
In the center aisle. Um, you cut half of those down to nine foot width. Not even half of them, but a portion of them down to nine foot. That would possibly give you enough of a width. You cut six of them down, it gives you six foot island uh to break these up. Um. Thoughts on that?
So I don't see that that would be a problem. I would, uh, I believe my client Ken is on the call. I don't know if he would like to speak to that on whether that is something he would be open to or not, but it could definitely be something that. We, we look into and try and accommodate to get those landscaped islands in there. And obviously, if we cannot, then the waiver would be requested.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll jump in, Joe, if you don't mind. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, good evening. Ken Stein with the Past Commandant Land Company. Um, to answer your question, Kevin, we're very happy to entertain reducing the width of the parking spaces in order to re. Um. Introduce the islands, if you will. Um, I would just want to check with the terms of the use variance. To make sure that, um, you know, we don't have a conflict on that end, but otherwise certainly happy to do that. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
It would tick up your percentage a little bit from seven.
Yes, it will.
Hopefully enough to eliminate that waiver request.
There you go. We like that. Um. Okay, so anyone else on the board? Any questions? Okay, um. So we still have to see you at a future meeting. This is more um just getting us up to speed, is that correct, uh, Sam?
Yes, that is correct. We, we currently have comments from Conservation Commission from Paul Duarte at DPW. As well as a, a comment from the fire department. Those have all been incorporated in the revised set that has been provided. It, the only thing was that we just, we did not provide enough time prior to this meeting to have it reviewed. So, so all of the comments and revisions have been accounted for. But just in order for time for everybody to review, yes, we would need the continuance, yes.
Very good. So I'm gonna ask the board to um make a recommendation to continue to a future. Which hopefully would be the next one, but we will just say future meeting at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion regarding four eighty-one Fons Corner Road.
Have a motion by Nick Cyclepatis.
I'll second.
Second by Helio Rosa, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
I have to abstain from voting on this.
Okay, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
And Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good. We'll see you soon.
Thank you all very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Ross, do you need me for any other applications this evening?
I think we should be good. The rest is just A and Rs and then the standards, so I think, I think you're all set. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Very good, John. We'll talk soon.
Good night.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda is approval not required, seven ninety-four Horse Neck Road.
Okay, so this is for the reconfiguration of map four lot six and lot six dash two. By creating a non-buildable parcel A, which is shown on the plan. Um, it's approximately five uh point five four one acres, excuse me. Um, and is originally from map four lot six dash two and is going to be conveyed to map four lot six. Um, it does not alter the existing frontage. They are both in single residence B, and because parcel A is labeled non-buildable, it would satisfy. One point one zero three of the Dartmouth subdivision regulations. Um, if I missed anything and there's anyone, uh, Mark Boucher, I see you're present. If you'd like to add anything, feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Ross, and good evening, everyone. Uh, it's Mark Boucher from Boucher and Associates. Um. And I think Ross covered pretty much everything. We had um. We had presented an A and R plan that um reconfigured these two lots about a year ago. It straightened out the lot line more or less uh from the rear of the property, the south end of the property. Up to Mash Tuxit Lane, uh, again, without altering any of the frontages in the um. The number of lots has always remained at two. And what the client would like to do is just uh take that small parcel A that's shown on the plan. Uh, contains uh an office, uh, it's, it's a building that's currently used as an office for the um. The nursery, the agricultural um operation on the property. And put it back onto the easterly lot, uh, as we showed on the plan. Uh, again, without any change to the number of lots or the um frontage. Uh, so we are requesting that the board uh in uh agree to endorse the plan as approval not required.
Okay, questions from the board? Hey? Well, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve as uh or endorse the uh the plan.
Have a motion made by Kevin Estes. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Good night.
Onto the next one. Approval not required, zero Russell's Mills Road, map twenty-eight, lot twenty-eight dash two.
Okay, so this is another A and R that you saw last year that is just being altered slightly. Um, it involved map twenty-eight, lot twenty dash two and twenty-eight dash three. Uh, essentially. Land from twenty-eight dash two is being conveyed to twenty-eight dash three. Both lots are labeled non-buildable due to lack of sufficient frontage as they were last year, so that aspect is not changing. Again, this would satisfy one point one zero three of the Dartmouth subdivision regulations because they are labeled as such. The only issue with this is that um they had an issue with the lot lines not matching our records. I have spoken to John Romanelli, who was the applicant about this. I don't know if he made it on. He was going to request.
I am here, Ross.
Oh, good. Glad you made it, John. You want to take over?
Uh, sure, briefly, uh, John Romanelli, Zenith Lance, I was here in Bedford. Uh, again, this is a DNRT property off of Fisher Road. It's the um. Seal Fentress property. And basically, from talking to Nick Wildman at the DNRT. Last year's A and R plan, once it got staked out, was not where they thought the lines were going to be, so we're basically just modifying where the lines are gonna fall. Out on the site and we have restaked the lot lines, uh, you'll see on the, on the A and R plan. We did uh set rebar caps along the new lot lines and there are some fencing. Nick wanted the lot lines to match the fencing they had put up and they hadn't matched. So that's basically the, the reconfiguration of this property. Uh, Ross, just so you know, in the. Time I've had sitting here, I did catch that error on that lot line. It was a, a bearing change. I've made the plan change and I've actually sent it to you by email. I'll upload it to the portal tomorrow morning as well.
Okay.
So that has been addressed.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll entertain any questions. Basically, I, I showed a dashed, uh, I don't know if I can share this. Let's try. I guess that didn't work, did it? I can't get it to share. Here we go. That show up now?
Yes.
Uh, you'll see, uh, the former lot lines are dashed where I'm pointing out on the screen right here. That's the, the era. The area that we switched and reconfigured, former lot line is the dashed line. The solid line is now what has been staked out in the field. And that's, that's basically the only change that was made from last year.
So this change was made to align with the stone, the existing stone wall?
And the fencing they, that the DNRT has already installed.
Okay.
So, John, thank you for making, I see that change with the kind of uh. Obtuse angle at the top.
This area here, yes, just, just to the right of the uh wood frame building.
Yep, so it looks like twenty-eight dash one, it, that little point that I was addressing still isn't there. Um, so that, that's actually where parcel or lot twenty dash two would connect. Um, on your first draft, there was a point and that is where twenty dash two would normally connect. It, it, it's hard to describe, you know, digitally, but um. If you want to set up a time, you know, you can always come to the office and we can, I can just kind of point out what I'm addressing.
Yeah, let's, let's do that tomorrow morning at some point.
Absolutely. Okay, so in this case, um, members of the board, this would have to be because of the twenty-one day deadline with an A and R. Um, be granted an extension and, uh, John, I can ha- try to have that form ready for you, so. Um, if you want to give me a call before you stop by, I can make sure that form is ready.
Will do.
Okay.
Um.
Ross, would you?
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Would, would, uh, is this a scenario where it would be, uh, better to approve this administratively? And uh allow you to come to an agreement with uh with the applicant, or is that extending too far?
I would be, I would be okay with that, given that it's just, um, you know, polishing up and abutting property line. Ultimately, that's uh all of your decision, if you're okay with doing that.
I'll defer to the opinion of the board, um.
You took the words out of my mouth, uh, to, to be honest with you.
Uh, Ross is comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Ditto. Uh. I'll make a motion that we uh approve this administratively, uh, pending the satisfaction of Ross and the uh the applicant.
Second.
Have a motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
Congratulations, Ross, your first administrative.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Great job, Ross.
All right. Very good, so we're all set. Hmm. Um. Next, number six minutes, November fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept and file.
Have a motion made by Nick Cyclepatis.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Correspondence, city of Fall River, uh, town of Free Towns.
Knowledge and fi- motion to acknowledge and file?
Motion made by Kevin Estes.
Second.
Second by Helio Rosa, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Okay. VR information, old business, new business, uh, zoning board of appeals, legal decisions, any questions? Okay, subcommittee reports. Anyone have any meetings? Pretty quiet time.
No.
I ha- I had a meeting also. Go ahead, Kevin, you first.
No, I, I did not have any.
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry.
No, so Margaret, you can report.
We had a meeting, um, discussion on several things, uh. The dog park was one of them because we've been working on the dog park for a long time, so I hope we get that done. And uh some uh changes to the policy of the uh preservation, community preservation. Board, um. Basically, that's about it.
Okay. Very good. Uh, plan this report.
Okay, so I have a couple things for you all today. Um, the first being, if you recall, there was an update to the Clarendon Estate subdivision a few months back. Um, where they removed the sidewalks. They have done that. It has been loomed and seeded and they are now kind of polishing up their remaining few things on their surety checklist with the DPW. One of them being um a revised as-built if the planning board so requires. So the um, one of the representatives from that subdivision has come into my office and inquired whether or not the planning board would deem that necessary. Given that it was just the removal of, um, you know, of sidewalks, it kind of just is now grass. Um, so. Based off the surety checklist, it is up to the planning board whether or not a um revised as-built would be necessary in this case.
Okay. There's nothing built, so not sure what we would need nas-built, what we would uh show on that as-built. Um, so do I. Um, so do I have any discussion on the matter?
Do we have to show a change, Kevin? The change that's been made?
Uh, no, it was just a removal of the, the sidewalks. So there's nothing built, you know, as-built shows that it's in compliance. So there's nothing being built. I don't see the sense of it personally, but it is a board decision.
Well, since my only, this is only talking, uh, since there's not going to be any sidewalks, it will all be grass. Uh, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Helio, what do you think?
Uh, in my world, record, record drawings are always, always valuable. Uh, and they tend to become valuable long after
Right.
all of us are around.
Right.
Um, now that's usually dealing with structures. In this case, where we removing a sidewalk and it's just, um, seeded area. You know, I don't know that anybody on this board has a strong connection to it. Uh, if anybody on the, on DPW or anybody else in town might find that value valuable. Um, I probably defer to somebody else's opinion. But, um, what inevitably happens is you don't record um, the as-built or a record condition and then something down the road, you need it and it's not there.
That's, that's my only concern, Kevin.
Yeah, um, but look at, well, I mean, my, my thought is that there's nothing built. So we're not going to show how deep the loom is or how high the grass has grown. Um, it
Does it change though, Kevin?
Sometimes, well, in, you know, so in these older developments where the DPW is taking out the sidewalks because they're so poor. Are they coming back to us with as-builts for changes in those developments?
I don't know, Kevin. All I'm, we're talking about this one now, so.
No, I, I understand, but they, they are not, they are not coming back to us.
No.
Um, as they repair or remove severely damaged.
Right.
So, um, you know, this development, these, the, these folks in that development have gone through an awful lot. And, you know, if we can waive the, you know, even if it's only a mere $500 or, or a thousand dollars, whatever it might be, I think, uh, I think it would be respectful of this board to do so.
Yeah, and, and, and again, three cents instead of two here. Um, Kevin brings up a, a valid point. Uh, I think if it was more than just the sidewalk, I might be swayed to be more stringent with record drawings. I'm not sure I'm gonna go to the death on this one.
If, if they were adding sidewalks, it would be a different call. If they were adding curb cuts or anything like that, it would be different. They, they are not having, they removed by two minutes.
Yeah, I, I might not feel this way all the time, but I think with this one, I, I probably.
No, I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just, you know, I just like to have things documented being, you know, I think when things are documented, it's better. I don't know.
And I think this discussion and our vote will document it for the file.
Okay.
So. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
The waiving of?
Yes.
Okay.
Second up.
We have a motion by Margaret Sweet to waive the as-built requirement. And second by Helio Rosa, all in favor. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Nello, yes.
Okay. Great. Um, the next one. Um, the engineer from the 413 State Road Project, uh, he sent me an email. I just wanted to update you all. Um, at the last meeting, there was a 30 day extension granted. He has since met with, um, a couple of the engineers from the DPW. And they are currently, um, kind of working together to get through to, um, a place where both sides are in agreement and in compliance. So they've, they are targeting the second of December, uh, for their meeting to return. I just wanted to give you all an update on their behalf for that. Um, and then lastly, there is a technical review meeting tomorrow where there is going to be a proposed, um, 40B development being discussed. Uh, again, these things are only conceptual, but, um, this seems to be one of the larger ones. So if anyone would like to attend, um, let me know, even if, even if not tonight, you can always shoot me an email in the morning, give me a call, whatever. I just wanted to put it out there.
Ross, what time is that at?
10 o'clock.
Hey, um, actually I wouldn't mind going, but if someone else from the board that has not been for a while, uh, would like to go?
Can, can we have two people going? Just not three?
Um, I don't see, I don't see a reason why not. Ross, there's enough room at the table?
I would, I would imagine, yeah. Yeah. I don't, I don't know what was discussed originally when, when this changed. So that's, that's up to you guys.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind going.
All right. Very good.
Okay. Um, that was it for planners report. I, those three items. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Ross on 413. Am I correct in saying we have to take some action on the second because we gave them a 30 day extension in whether it's another 30 day extension?
Yeah, I think some, something would have to occur, I would imagine. Yes.
Okay. So please.
Yeah. So they should be, they will be, they will be on the agenda. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, next is, uh, my report. Really everything's status quo. Ross is doing a great job. Getting a lot of help from Michelle. We are in the, um, ZBA office. And we appreciate it. Um, John Hanson i- is there for him to use these bigger projects and, um, site plan reviews, public hearings. Um, but really Ross is the, uh, driving force behind the office these days. And, um, we're, we're working on getting you some help. We really are. So, um, we appreciate it. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Really nice job, Ross.
Much appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Ross, to echo everybody, with all due respect to who left, it doesn't feel from my position like we have avoided what we're doing. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Nick. That's great to hear. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, you, you become my favorite board member. In a row, second, you in a row.
You're all making a liar out of me. I sent the text somewhere and said it's going to be a late one. You know where somewhere is, the two people I care about. Here we are getting out on time. I'll second it.
Praise them. Second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor. Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. All right. Thank you guys.